Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Selectmen regular meeting of Monday, August 28th.
Twenty.
Twentieth, I'm sorry. At about seven, what is it? Seven oh five. I call this meeting an order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Item two A is District Fund Run. That's Wednesday, August 22nd. That's after tomorrow. At 6:00 PM at the Millville Greenway parking lot. And that's where kids get free ice cream. Kids are locked, ride a bike. And it's really, this is to the benefit of the DMR school district. Item two under announcements is the state primary election. And that is on Tuesday, September 4th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. This should be, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the agenda. At St. Augustine's Church Hall. Item C is Labor Day is September 3rd. And Town Hall will be closed on Monday, September 3rd. Item three on the agenda, minutes for August 6th, 2018, regular and executive sessions. Are there any comments regarding the minutes?
Make a motion or accept the minutes for the August 6th meeting, both executive session and regular meeting minutes.
I second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Department and Board. Town Clerk, the Town Clerk is not.
No, she's away this week. But she did ask to put forward the fact that she would like to have the appointment of Mr. David Maloney to the Board of Registars for a three-year unexpired term until March 31st, 2020.
I make a motion to appoint David Maloney to the Board of Registars for three-year unexpired term until March 31st, 2020.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Public forum, citizens' comments.
Good evening. Jackie Lima, 33 Allied Court. And I'm glad to see Mr. Bybers here as well. I was just wondering if the Board could provide an update to me where they are in appointing an Assistant Building Inspector.
We are actually in the process of pointing in just an interim so that when there is an inability for our Building Commissioner, if he's away or something else. And that letter has already gone out. And unfortunately, we have a Town Clerk who only works one day a week. That person has not been sworn in. But when they do, that is when that person can do as authorized by our Building Commissioner to do certain aspects of the job that he may or may not be able to do.
Okay. I was just wondering, doesn't the Board of Selectmen appoint that?
No, they don't.
They do not?
No. Mass General laws allows the Town Administrator to do everything from wiring inspectors to building commissioners, even though in the past they did.
Okay. So that's changed.
We've had a change of gum, basically.
Right. Okay. That's, so it falls under you now. So there's a letter out and the person just needs to get sworn in? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on. Correspondents, Arm Fest. We've got, received a letter from the town of Windsocket announcing, inviting Millville to participate in the 40th Parade on Monday, October 8th in Windsocket. Just wondering if anyone has an interest in participating in the Arm Fest Parade representing Millville?
I'm not around that.
No.
I'll be out of time.
Item B under correspondence, Charter Communications, Charter Spectrum provided us with a copy of their annual financial report ending December 31st, 2017. In my perusal of that report, Charter Spectrum are financially sound and the Chair will continue to get support to run our cable channel.
Yeah. That's a good thing.
Blackstone Valley.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. We received a letter for the redo grant.
Yes, just so that you know, the Board, I mean, grant opportunities work different ways. Sometimes we're the ones looking for support on a grant proposal and then other times, local entities that have provided us support are looking for letters of support. So I just wanted to keep in your packet, the Blackstone Valley Chamber had sent out a request to have the town of Millville send a letter of support for the Regional Economic Development Opportunity Grant Program, which has benefited the Chamber in the past and which has then in turn assisted our town. And so that letter went out to the Executive Office. Yeah. Under the project manager, Mr. and Ms. Devon Goodall.
Thank you. On item D, a letter to the Board regarding district-wide meeting. I was, we just received that this evening.
Right. Unfortunately, when I had asked the Town Clerk to send that, if you'd like, you can table it to when she's back. But it was just a letter that she wanted to give to the Board as a follow-up to the district-wide meeting and things that she felt were not, were not taking into account the perspective of a Town Clerk. As much as I think everyone wants to put the district-wide meeting behind them for, from what I understand, for both Town Clerks, it was not a very pleasant experience. And unfortunately, I think the letter is just to say, in the future, if we have another district-wide meeting, the Town Clerk would like to have this Board apprised that some of the things that occurred in the lead-up meeting prior to the town, district-wide meeting, was one in which both Town Clerks felt that their requests were not respectfully entertained or, and were minimized by the moderator that was selected. I'm just reading what she has put together in her letter. So she is just hoping that going forward that, that the two clerks had been dismayed at the lack of security at the entrance of the auditorium to ensure that only registered voters were allowed into the auditorium, that it was really impossible to ascertain if people entering the auditorium and voting at the meeting were actually registered voters who were duly checked in. There was no check system in place either at the doors or to the auditorium or at the front of the auditorium where the ballots were being distributed. Both the clerks had tried to no avail to make suggestions prior to the meeting on how the problem could be alleviated, but they were overruled to those suggestions. So this is coming from our Town Clerk. She did, you know, have some conversations with the Town Clerk in Blackstone, but this was her perspective. And she just says that if you, next time, it would be helpful to think about having a moderator that was a moderator. That's her perspective based on her experience. And so you never know. You might go to another district-wide meeting, even though they're rare. But if you do, she would respectfully request that, you know, people think about that from the perspective of the clerk. They certainly didn't entertain, expect that to happen.
Correct.
But it was something that she felt was difficult.
Yes. I've heard similar comments from other residents regarding.
I was there. I had the same concerns. I don't know how they knew who voted and who didn't vote. And when that was brought up, the answer we received was, we'll take, if we go over the amount of voters that we have registered, if the vote exceeds the amount of voters we have registered, we'll take equal yays and ayes out and then use that number to finalize the vote.
Not very professional.
I think they're just looking that, her assertion is that the Town Clerks be really consulted with regards to their expertise in both the check-in and the secret ballot process. So there you go.
Luckily, it wasn't a close vote from that perspective.
Right. Well, everything's a learning process.
That's it.
So, okay. Moving on to new business. Item A, that special town meeting, a vote to set a meeting date and open the warrant for the fall town meeting.
I think the fact that we don't have the Vice Chairwoman here, that you might be thinking about a couple of different possible dates. I know after talking with both our Finance Director and our Town Clerk, don't forget it's election year, so the first week of November is quite busy and exhausting for the Town Clerk. Then she is not going to be available for the week, weekend, week of the 15th and then Thanksgiving week. So after talking with both the Finance Director and the Town Clerk, I think the last week of November would be the week that we would be shooting for and both would be okay with that. The last person I have to check with is our Town Moderator. So, you know, knowing that the Thanksgiving weekend is, you know, a long weekend, I wouldn't recommend that Monday. But I think I'll try to see if we can get either a Tuesday or Wednesday with the moderator. So, you know, I would refrain from actually, you know, placing that vote. We'll do that the next meeting. But I would say that you could vote to open the warrant for the upcoming town meeting so we can start to entertain any articles that.
Okay. We can open without a date?
Yeah, because you're opening mod for a special town meeting, as far as I know. I mean, we're going to set the town meeting. It's just to accept articles going forward. You could open it at any point in time. It's just that once you do, you know, you need to set an actual date at some point.
Okay. So I'll hear a motion to open the warrant for the fall town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
No move.
Okay. The real reason for that, too, is just to allow, especially if there are zoning articles that have to go before the Planning Board, to give them enough opportunity to set their public hearing process in place and the advertising that might be required for that. So that gives us a little bit more time than waiting another two weeks for that to happen.
The, need some help with this marijuana licensing host agreement negotiation request?
Yes. I just wanted to put this on your agenda. We are getting requests now. I have had now both companies that came and requested an interest or displayed an interest in wanting to garner either both licenses. I think at first it looked like the second people were interested maybe only in one license. The two women that had presented to you in your last one have changed their mind from being a medical marijuana cultivation and dispensary that they're now interested also in the retail. But also Marty's Liquors has been in touch with me. And knowing that they came first, I think what I'd like to do is set up a time where we may think about actually meeting with them to negotiate, you know, their ideas about what they would consider a host agreement and then do the same thing after the fact with the second group. This, of course, is important to the town regardless of when it actually happens. Oftentimes when host agreements are negotiated, there is, you know, an upfront initial monetary aspect to it. And then there's, you know, once the actual organization of, or the corporate entity of it being fully operational, it becomes, there's more money, yeah, that comes to the town. So I would suggest that we do it. And, you know, some of that may also be able to be considered within this year's budget, so if it's declared as one-time revenue. So I would suggest that we spend some time in the beginning of November, setting up two dates. I don't know if anybody's going to be really away after the first week of September, maybe the second week of September?
November, did you say?
I'd like to do September. I think it's, yeah.
September?
These guys want to get rolling because all this does is, is if, if they can get a host agreement with the community that allows them to apply for a license from the state, then the licensed entity of the state then would give them the ability to come back and then start the whole process with the town about developing a site plan, doing the special permitting. And then they have to be, you know, going through the scrutiny even more so. So this is just to say, more from the financial perspective, what that would be. And then all the details get ironed out after the state awards them or approves of them to be able to be a license holder. But then it comes back to the town to decide, does the town really want them? So there's more steps to it. But this is something that is done with the Board.
So let's consider the second Board of Selectmen meeting in September.
Okay, towards the end of that month.
What's the date on that one, Chair?
I would say that because it's negotiations, you wouldn't do it in a, I would do it in an executive session, yeah. So that's why I was thinking the second week of September.
The week of September 10th?
Yeah. The week of September, thank you. Is there any day that works better or not so good for any of you?
Not available that week.
Okay. So we'll, I'll double check with Ms. Dean Wing and then we'll maybe put it for that Monday or something like that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? This is from the Town Administrator. Is there some sort of clearinghouse, if you will, at the state level of what kind of agreements other communities have made so that we can have some reference points as to what we're going for here in Millville?
Obviously, I would be doing that. It's not really, you know, so, yes. I've already spoken with a number of communities, small ones to big ones, that have actually negotiated ones for both retail and cultivation. And we would be considering those pieces of it.
And when you're sitting at my dining room table, all those papers, they're on the table there?
Excuse me?
When you're sitting in my dining room at the table with all those papers over it?
Yeah.
If you go through all of them, you'll see that type of information there.
I'm just asking.
Okay. We're, I.
Yeah, we won't be going into a blank.
I didn't think so.
No.
So a one-day liquor license.
Seven C.
Seven C.
The regional agreement first for the intermunicipal, for nursing.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the agenda, you have the ability tonight to vote to approve an intermunicipal agreement for public health nursing services. This was another attempt at re, taking a second look at our budget to see where we may be able to reduce costs but yet increase or improve the services. So right now, we had an agreement in the past that was just routinely reauthorized every year with a local health agency. And then a little closer scrutiny of that, I realized that we might be actually overpaying for services that was put into effect long before I was here. But the Board of Health was negotiating that. So with the Town Administrator, I looked at all these different agreements. And this is an agreement that is not just with the town of Sutton, but the town of Sutton actually is the host community. They represent a number of communities as intermunicipal partners where they provide an actual public health nursing services. So what we got from our previous contract was about $2,500 worth of doing flu clinics and just disease monitoring, which we didn't have a lot of. And this actually provides us with a whole range of services from everything, from emergency preparedness and following up in the home on visits for people who have been ill to actually doing our entire flu clinics and not charging us for the flu clinic. So this really is a service where it winds up being at a rate of about $75 per hour per nurse. And we're estimated that if we were to look at the rates for disease prevention and monitoring in this town that gets reported to the state, you know, we probably can be saving anywhere from, you know, $1,500 to $1,800 out of that contract. So we're going to be one of the, I think, last communities that signed on to this. Other communities have been doing this for quite some time and it's saved them money. So I know that we initially signed a, an authorization for our Town Council, who represents both Sutton and Millville, to allow them to draft the agreement. So after we sign here, it has already been approved by the Town Board of Selectmen in Sutton. And then we'll have a ratified intermunicipal agreement, yet another one, to try to help us save some money.
Thank you.
And the nurse that is the key person here has already been in touch with our Board of Health. And I did meet with the Board of Health in advance about this prior to getting the actual intermunicipal agreement. And so there has been communication already being set up by the public health nurse and our Board of Health.
Is this for flu clinic and reportable?
It's a whole game. It's even more, yeah. It's even more than that. So it also, the person actually works as, you know, a participant in the emergency preparedness, the response planning and training. They provide other additional services that allow the town to monitor sentinel events. They do case management for patients, both in their home and also with the institution that they might be coming from. So reportable cases like TB. They do both health prevention and intervention. They're going to work, this person has said that they will work with our Council on Aging and perhaps doing some more things other than just what has traditionally been provided to this town, which really was the flu clinics. So I think we're going to see a more robust presence for public health.
So previously, yeah. So previously, it was $2,500 based on the number of people who has come up for flu clinics and other. What is the estimate on this particular? I see the hourly, right?
Yeah. It could be, it'll depend on what we have for a disease population. But we think that there's going to be a savings of at least $1,500, if not more. And I expect, the one thing they don't charge us for, they don't charge, she's not going to charge us for the setup of the flu clinics and then charge us for the equipment use for flu clinics, which, in other words, the money they make is just charging the insurance company. So we were getting, you know, the agency before was actually sort of double billing in some respects.
So they're not going to charge us $75 per hour when they're doing the flu clinic?
No. What they're charging is the agent, I mean, the insurance company for that. No, the $75 per hour is more about the disease monitoring and things like that. Yep. That's the difference.
All right.
Okay. We're all set with that?
Yes. We'll just be signing it at the end of the thing.
A one-day liquor license for the Polish-American.
Did you vote to approve it? No. Oh, Mr. Chairman, yeah. You just have to call for a vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement. I think we just didn't do that. I got carried away.
I hear a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for public health.
Make the motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for public health nursing services.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So this one-day liquor license has on hold, we'll have to.
No, no. Actually, I was going to say, so you have before you a special, it's a one-day liquor license that the Polish-American Club has asked as a fundraiser. I think it's to benefit cancer survivor. And it is for an all alcohol with an attendance expected, you know, not to exceed 150 persons. Excuse me. This is not the first time that they've requested a one-day liquor license. They've done it in the past. They've complied with giving everything that's part of the application, which included, you know, a Corey check. It just includes the certificate of insurance to show that, that the servers are licensed. We just went through this recently with them for their recertification or for their regular alcohol inside the premises. So this is for this one day outside premises. Right. No, I think it's, I think it's outside. So that's why it's a one-day liquor license. So the only thing that has not been checked off at this point was that the Police Chief is not here to have done this. He was away as of Wednesday and the application had come in after he had been gone. So what I would do is, because everything else is in order, I would vote it conditional to the approval of the Police Chief before issuing the actual permit. So if we sign it, it won't go out until that happens.
Yeah, I'll hear a motion to conditionally approve the one-day liquor license pending the conditional approval of the Chief of Police.
I agree to the motion as spoken.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Old Business, National Grid, street lighting. This is regarding LED conversion of streetlights.
As you remember, we had a regional outreach manager come to our previous meeting. And we had discussed that, two years ago, I had reached out to National Grid about LED conversion. And back then, because the tariffs did not allow municipalities to do that without actually owning the light fixture, replacing the light fixture. And that was a whole, you know, very expensive proposition. So now, two years later, National Grid saw there was such an interest that they were able to change the tariff regulations so that now they're able to replace. So I did mention this in our last Board meeting that I would send an official request to National Grid, which is what's in your packet. And basically, I'm requesting that, that all of our streetlights be converted to LED. There is probably like a six-month delay for a actual community to have this happen because there are already communities that are in the queue. But I figured we get in the queue now and hopefully someday when we have all of our streetlights uncapped, it'll still allow us to make continued savings. So that's another piece of it. I'm working with our highway surveyor right now to actually determine the wattage in terms of making sure the lumens are similar, if not brighter.
It's like a four time.
It is, right. So that's what we're considering, that part of it. But I just wanted you to know that that notification and our negotiation with what they'll be converted to is gone out.
Are you remote?
No, you don't need to do anything with that. It's just so that you know.
Next on the agenda is Albert Drive. The deed, deeds have been recorded as a public way for Albert Drive.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that the Board was informed that that has finally been recorded and so that is officially a public way. And now it goes on our, our list of roads to maintain. And to.
I invite Mr. Lincoln Barber to come forward. And this is regarding mandatory service requirements and compliance issues. Yeah, and then some, and expand it a little bit as I got involved in it. I put my thoughts down on paper because there were just too many and that I wanted to be able to follow things. To preface my comments, this is not meant to be leveled at the Board of Selectmen or pointing a finger at anyone. It's based on some observations and thoughts from conversations I've had with people. So I'm just going to read this and if you have any questions, feel free to ask them when you're done. "I'm speaking to the senior-level management team of a $6 million corporation who's been handed a mandate by the Board of Directors to cut expenses by over 10%. Without going into the whole story, I would like to bring up several of the areas that were chosen to accomplish this and their potential long-term impact on the corporation's viability. I'd first like to talk about the elimination of stipends. To begin with, Merriam-Webster defines stipend as a fixed sum of money paid periodically for services. That sounds like a paycheck to me. It's kind of like calling part of your college tuition a fee so it doesn't fall under the tuition guidelines. In this case, stipend means we know the job you're doing is worth a lot more than we can afford to pay for it, so we will call it a stipend so it will fall outside of any payroll guidelines. It's very difficult to determine exactly how much was cut in this area, so I'd just like to highlight a few and how I perceive will affect things long-term. We have a limited number of citizens who have stepped forward over the years to volunteer their time for the town. There's been a chronic shortage of people historically over the last 20 years to fill boards and other positions. Frequently, individuals take on more than one position. Some of these jobs require far more time and effort than others, but they all require a time commitment, some during regular business hours, when most people are at their regular place of employment. As a reward for this dedication and commitment, sometimes for decades, we as a town have decided to insult these people by demanding they work for free. And more importantly, this step was taken without asking informally or otherwise how this would impact people's willingness to continue to volunteer. The Finance Committee chose this step as an across-the-board way of chopping off a chunk of money towards a much larger goal. My math came up with somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000 or roughly 4% of their goal. I don't think that they expected to have that proposal be the option that the town decided on. Let's look at some of these choices. First one's the tree warden. Not only was his $1,000 stipend removed, but all of his police detail line item as well. Are you going to get out of bed at 2:00 AM in a snowstorm to clear a downed tree and maybe accidentally injure yourself with a chainsaw for free? I think not. Number two is the conservation commission. We eliminated their stipends of $700, but more importantly, the part-time admin line item for $2,100. That's the person who processes the proper forms and paperwork with the state and the Department of Environmental Protection. They go to court when they should be at their regular job. They do the work of the board between meetings so that it actually functions. They meet deadlines and conform to state-mandated timelines. We should expect this individual has a level of professional expertise and knowledge to come to work for free so we can pay a few pennies less per household in taxes. The assessors department, line item $2,600. I'm sorry, but this is one of the departments that contributed greatly in getting the town into this revenue shortfall, and now we want to ensure we get unskilled labor to help our new professional assessor by paying them nothing. This sounds like a recipe for backsliding to where we are trying to pull ourselves out of now. The Blackstone Valley Tech representative. We have a man who's spent the last 30 years representing the town of Millville to be a part of the most successful vocational school district in the state, and now we need the $800 stipend more than the legacy of knowledge and expertise that he brings to this job. You, the very Board of Selectmen, line item $4,100. I can tell you from personal experience it is well-earned and not close to the proper compensation. The people who sat on that board and led us down this path of on-the-brink didn't do it stipend-free and neither should you. The town is alienating the very people who have helped it get by with stipends for so long. The town will not replace quality people utilizing decades of experience and achieve remotely similar results with unpaid new volunteers, if they come forward. Many of these jobs are mandated by state law and must be filled one way or another. Lastly, I'll mention the veterans' agent, a position that I have been appointed to for the last 13 years. The veterans' agent is a position mandated by state law and it must be filled. It requires a mandatory annual training. For years, it was four days. It's recently been shortened to three and now also requires a competency test and a certification. I have for 13 years attended annual training on my time at my expense, with the exception of mileage reimbursement, and I've maintained this certification. It's been an honor to help the veterans of Millville and their families, and I hope to continue to do so. I've spent some of my own money on office supplies and travel expenses, and I spend hours and hours in hospital waiting rooms, driven hours to pick up metal equipment, and help people through a variety of different difficult situations because to me, it was called for, paid or not. You will not get that kind of commitment from a non-resident nor one who is not considered worthy of a stipend. There was much talk of volunteerism over the last few months. To this point, I would say it has failed to materialize. There was also a great deal of talk about fixed income and the impact of those fixed income households with a tax increase. I think you will find a substantial number of fixed-income citizens serving on boards and committees who have had their incomes impacted by these cuts. I would also be curious to know if during this time of imposed fiscal belt tightening, did the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee do away with their stipends to mirror the efforts of their fellow Millville board and department members? We have a town clerk who has invested in herself and taken courses on her own time and expense to be qualified and certified to perform the job. I believe she's the first town clerk in Millville's history to be so certified. We rewarded this dedication and commitment by cutting our hours by 33%. Qualified professional people will not stay in Millville when you continue to cut hours and pay. Stop saying you cannot afford a town government and office staff. You cannot afford to not have one. This is a $6 million business, not an experiment in budgeting. There are many positions I have not mentioned. I think you get the point. In this time of struggle and monetary strain, do not alienate the very people who have helped this town for years by pretending if those who are already giving make one more sacrifice, for those who won't and those who don't want to pay for the town's business operating expenses, it will all go away. There's a great challenge ahead for all of us, and pretending that eliminating a tree warden's budget when you can see dozens of dead trees on the side of the road or having no reserve money for water tank issues at the elementary school is irresponsible. The town's Chapter 115 obligation for veterans' benefits could be up 200% under the budget that's been adopted with a recent change in our circumstance. This bill has to be paid and could increase at any time. The list of unfunded but easily anticipated future expenses not included in this bare-bones budget is extensive. We need to get our heads out of the sand, revisit the budget passed originally at town meeting, and carry on the progress that has been made before we hear that giant sucking sound that Ross Perot spoke on. Thanks for your time. Thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Any questions? It's true.
Preaching to the choir.
It was mainly for the people on TV.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question, how is the next step? The next step is Department of Revenue indicating another override.
We've said for a long time, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So, you know, as you know, financially, we're working to close the existing budget deficit for this year, which has required everything from implementing the budget that has been so, I think, aptly defined by Mr. Barber about its effect. And that is, you know, being felt with every month that goes by. And then on the flip side, we know that there will be some additional cuts and the chief and myself have been working on those to try to make those as, at the least harmful that we can and to, again, with an eye towards and trying to improve services. We're entering into everything from intermunicipal agreements at whatever lightning speed we can, as well as looking at ways to generate revenue, some of which I'll talk about in my administrator update, just to close the gap. But again, this doesn't fix the problem of something that has been brewing for the better part of 13 to 15 years. And that, no matter how much you continue to pare it down, and the fact that you don't have municipal trash and all of these, you will continue to have to address the fact that, you know, all of those years where one-time revenues were being used, you know, it comes home to roost. And that is why you can't get out from it, we said before, you're not going to be able to cut your way out of it for any length of period of time before it comes back and once again, you realize, you know, that you have to actually address it. And the amount and the date, it'll be revisited and that will be something that the town will have to address at this point. So, you know, the chairman asked for that to be placed under Selectmen's forum, but I know we're working as hard as we can and we're still going to continue to do that.
What's the gap at right now?
Well, it's, we're going to talk about that hopefully in the month of September because part of it is being contingent on things that we're just finalizing now. So the stuff that we're looking at that potentially is going to fix that gap, I think we've closed it probably to at least $150,000 and we have another amount of that to go. And so, you know, I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that means. We're talking about doing a land auction to help with that so we don't have to do even further cuts after we look at the essential staff, which, you know, we'll be making those announcements as soon as the chief has finalized his decisions. I know we have talked about the other areas where we're trying to raise revenue. So until I ink those agreements that actually, we can declare it as one-time revenue, we will always continue to have that deficit. So, I mean, shaving off, you know, a $1,500 savings is important. Don't get me wrong, I'm looking at all of that, even looking back at the operating budgets that were just for maintenance of the buildings. We're pairing those back so that the ones, especially for the senior center and for the library, that, you know, that those areas we didn't really reduce very much. So I'm going to continue to cull those small savings, but the bigger ones are either we try to get one-time revenues, which I'm trying to do at this moment, and we're being successful on some of those fronts. But then the other piece of it is, you know, we have to also do a land auction to try to close that gap. Again, that was all money that was anticipated for us to have, to put towards replenishing our one-time reserves, and instead, we're doing the same thing that the Department of Revenue told us not to do.
Right.
Right, so...
With, once again, one-time revenues.
So, you know, we'll, you know, continue to hammer home, I think, that message that that has to change, you know? And in the meantime, though, we will, you know, close that and I think that part of it will, again, allow the town to go forward with some kind of understanding that it's going to continue to have to wrestle with this issue. It's not going to go away.
Right.
So, thank you.
Moving on. Thank you. Sunnyside Solar, Mr. Hoo, would you like to address? Sunnyside Solar request.
I, we do not have a copy of the letter in front of us.
I thought it was in the packet, I thought it was...
It's not in the packet.
Oh, it's not in yours? Oh, sorry. All right, I don't know how here we go. Anyway, I think Mr. Hoo, if I'm not speaking out of turn, asked for this to be placed on a future agenda because he had received this letter. And I'm sorry that it didn't wind up in your packet. So this letter actually is from a company that is representing a landowner in town. This is a company that actually appeared before our Board of Selectmen. We actually allowed a presentation to be done, not last year, but the year before that, in 2016, late in the fall, early, actually maybe even early wintertime. Anyway, at that time, there was interest by this landowner who had commissioned with this solar company about trying to put a large solar array on their property. Since that time, and the concerns I had conveyed at that time was the fact that there were many steps that need to take place in order to construct a solar array in town or to get permission to do so. It is something that is considered a special permit and it's something that has to conform to every other kind of building project that takes place in our community. And it goes before our planning board and those kinds of decisions. It would not just be a planning board issue. Sometimes it becomes one in which agreements that get made with a town. So after having met with this company, just to, because some of you were not on the board at that time, there has been a number of months and a number of events that have taken place. I can't strongly reiterate this, that this town has met with the landowner and also has met with a variety of people who have tried to represent the landowner. We do not have an active application in front of the town. We also don't have a complete application of any sort before the town. Matter of fact, there were issues with the clearing, mass clearing of the property and stormwater regulation violations, which we wound up actually being in court over. And the town was successful in conveying that it was a violation of our bylaws. Even since that point in time, the town planner and the Conservation Commission had tried to get together so that people would understand what was required of them. The conservation had issued a cease and desist, it was completely ignored and has never been addressed. There are no environmental engineering plans. The septic, not the septic, the stormwater regulation for the town requires an application and it has to be a complete application. It has never been a complete application. It doesn't even muster up to being accepted as something that should be entertained by a board. There is a big push right now by a lot of solar companies with landowners to make solar happen in communities because there are fairly lucrative benefits and the changes to the solar laws for the state and also even at the federal level are changing. So there is an impetus to get things done as quickly as possible. But the letter before you is a request to actually waive our bylaws. We do not waive our bylaws. It's the law. I also had forwarded this letter to our Conservation Commission because it seems to be targeting the Conservation Commission. And the response I got back from both the chairman and also Amy Sutherland, who's a longtime member, was that we don't waive bylaws, you know? And that's, there is no such thing. So I don't understand why, you know, unfortunately, you're getting targeted at this point to bring this before, but it's, I just wanted to say it. We've spent a lot of time, I think internally, wrestling with this issue. We're not afraid of looking at solar projects that are brought before us. And matter of fact, the planning board, much to their credit, just went through a lengthy process in looking at an actual solar array. I was going to bring that up and had voted with a number of conditions attached to it, but nevertheless had entertained it and it's not even being fully constructed in our town. So it's completely possible to have things happen, but this is not the way to do it. And we're not going to... And we're not going to accept that, you know?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to be able to put that out there.
No, I appreciate that, and the information that I received tonight answered the questions I had.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Haven't had enough airtime.
Yeah, that's okay. This is just the stuff that goes around, comes around. Town administrator update, the EPA, yes, the Environmental Protection Administration has been in touch with the town about the Kempton Road, former midnight dumping site. As you know, we have, this board has addressed that the Massachusetts DEP had come back and done some monitoring of the actual site, but then did a number of well testing outside of the site because they had had, I had mentioned publicly, that they had had a increase in a well, not necessarily in our town, but in the actual site. And they were concerned that maybe the actual contaminants, could they be moving? So, the last time I reported that it looked like all of the wells in the town of Millville, way beyond where the site is, all the way up through Chester Hill Road, were showing that they were negative. But it was concerning enough for the DEP, for the volatility of the organic compounds in the monitoring wells that they have and the filtration system that they have, that they called in the Environmental Protection Agency. Some people may have seen them, I know that some people did see them because they were in their white suits and they were looking and doing another analysis.
I got a couple of calls.
Yes, another analysis of the site. Remember that the way that this site was addressed in the past was, was basically capping and surrounding and monitoring. And the concern now is that, you know, they're worried about, you know, could it, could it be, you know, going beyond the bounds that it already had been contained in? And so, they've called in the Environmental Protection Administration to actually, you know, do an evaluation. So, they've been in town. The reason why I got the call from the state administrator in Boston was the fact that if they find that the actual contaminant levels in the monitoring wells that they have and everything, if they've exceeded to where they would have wanted them to be, that they would at this point in time potentially engage with the town of Millville and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to actually do, you know, a much more full-scale cleaning of the site. And they're the only ones who have the money, basically, to do that. They have upwards of a $2 million fund that they can do emergency abatement, and that is what I think they're suggesting to us at this level, although I don't have the final report back. But just so that people know, this would be a great thing, you know, to actually do, I think, a much more extensive mitigation and abatement of the actual site. But again, this is based on what is happening at the site, not what's happening in general to everybody else's wells. But it would have been great if they had been able to do that from the very beginning. But I think the immediate remedy through the mass DEP was they felt that they could contain it and keep monitoring it, and that's what they've been doing, and it's been more concerning to them lately. So, so that part of it, we'll know more, but I hope that they do take us on. And they did come to town, they came here to the town hall and met for quite some time talking about the finer aspects of the types of contaminants and the like, but they would be, they will be in touch with us.
I don't want to scare a lot of people here.
No, I, no, I don't. I think what it is, people have to remember, this is something that actually happened in the 1990s. It's, this has existed since that time, and all they're doing is, you know, making sure that that part of it is not going unchecked. And so, you know, for them, they have the ability to have been asked to step in. They were not really asked to step in prior. It was considered resolvable or containable through the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection by capping and by submersing the wells and, you know, all those kinds of things. So, they said that they will be in touch with the town so that we'll go through the same kind of forum that I did before with the, the agency heads over the issue of contaminants up on Providence Street, and, you know, they can walk us through that process. I just didn't want people to be uninformed that they may have seen people having been at the site, and they're, they're very, very dedicated to wanting to make sure that they give enough information out. And they were also going to be meeting with the town manager in Uxbridge as well, and so, we're just at the beginning phases, but I think it's important as a board, in case you do get calls, you know, that we at least let people know that that is something that is taking place for the moment.
Have there been any results from the latest DEP rounds?
Yeah, they showed that our wells in, in Millville were fine. It's, it's not that. It's the well, you know, it's the water on the site, and that's what they're worried about, you know? They don't want it to eventually get into a bedrock situation, which is what we have up on Providence Street where they think that, you know, that contaminant is flowing from way over in Rhode Island somewhere. So, so I think, yeah, this is part of what they want to be able, sometimes it's about removing the entire soil away from it so that it doesn't, you know, go further and permeate further down. But they have the wells that they sink are so many feet in the ground, and then they monitor that and they can tell whether something, you know? So, for them, I think it was just, they were at this point saying that they felt that the EPA would be better equipped to help and assist with the next steps.
Moving on, land auctions?
Right. So, one of the things that we talked about, and I know this board is aware of, is that we are looking to actually auction off town-owned land. The town has become a little bit of a land baron through non-payment of taxes, and the town has not really had a bona fide land auction. This is one way, again, to generate one-time reserve, money that could be replenishing of reserves or to, to help the town going forward. So, we have started that process with the municipal auction strategies through Paul Zikus. He's worked with 81 municipalities, is known to run a very effective and usually worthwhile auction for public land to then go on back onto the tax rolls. So, I do know that we're already in the throes of working with our treasure collector, our tax title attorney, our assessor. It's really a very collaborative effort to go forward. This is not something that costs the town money other than the energy that we put into it, but it is something that hopefully will generate, you know, some, some revenue for the town. And of course, we don't, and anybody's going to ask, there's no list right now, and everybody wants to know. That is something that gets culled and gets fully vetted before it becomes marketed by municipal, you know, strategies. So, hopefully, in the, we're looking for an October auction.
Basically, we're the neighbor of maybe 12 properties?
It could be, it could be a little bit more than that, or a little bit less, but something around that. This won't be the last land auction you have, and what I was going to say, though, it, you know, I think by putting a number of properties together, that, you know, you want to generate interest, and the one thing that they're capable of doing is getting us outside interest. If we try to do it on our own, it's really not a, you know, you'd be lucky if you get a handful of people and the bidding may not be really good, but if you have somebody who really knows what they're doing, which they do, that typically, you know, even with a grouping offers more interest. I myself have met with our zoning chairman and open space recreation plan chairman, along with each one of the department heads, to look at each particular parcel, to weigh it. We've met with the company to look at each one, and right now, we're, we're doing a little bit more analysis even with CMRPC for different pieces of information to make sure that whatever we put together, you know, will be, you know, the good parcels that we think can, can generate a lot of interest and hopefully a lot of good bidding.
Directly, this will not cost the town.
Right, right. No, no, all that gets put on the person who, yeah, gets interested in buying the property.
Is it including the auction company that we're using?
Yep. That's what we were saying.
Typically, at any auction you go to, there's a buyer's premium, that's how they make their money.
The next item is the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Housing Choice Small Town Capital Grant Program. I just wanted to inform the board that I was applying for another grant at this point in time. It's a new program that they decided, because most small towns don't have a lot of ability to qualify for housing grants that the state offers because of the fact that we have a small population and we don't run large, either affordable housing units and the like. So, we typically don't qualify, but this year, they just changed the program to allow small communities under 7,000 in a population to apply for certain capital grants. And one of the things that, of course, we're dealing with in moving to a smaller footprint here in this building was the whole issue of space and lack thereof for storage and for being able to house in a permanent way our records. And knowing that we're going to redevelop at some point, the, the old town hall, we've got to find a way to fix that. So, one of the grant applications that I'm putting together is to address that through a modular, a really good modular building that can actually be outfitted with electricity and HVAC system so that our records and everything that are not contained in here can go in that and be closer to us. So, anyway, that will be finalized for this Thursday. I'll be sharing you with, you know, you that, and also looking at maybe combining that with the whole issue of how our highway department has absolutely no, no building other than a salt shed, which you cannot put equipment in. The only other thing we have is an old dump guard shack that is on a footprint of about 11 by 11, in which it is a small cinder block building that is completely and woefully inadequate. So, I'm looking to try to make a proposal for two buildings, and if we could get something like that and not have it come out of our capital program, that would be huge for addressing two major needs, and, and they're long-term needs, they don't go away. But I mean, if, I'll show you the pictures, it's pretty pathetic that that's where we, in the DPW area, that's where we store all of our emergency highway items, along with all the equipment and, you know?
Dead animals.
Yeah, well, dead animals too, you know, freezer. But I mean, it's, you know, the water comes in through the bottom of the floor, it ices in the wintertime, there is no place for these guys to actually, you know, prep and get their equipment together. They're not in a heated building, they're not even in a building that has windows. They're in an 11 by 11 former guard shack to the dump. And that is something that, you know, should be addressed, and if we can do that through a capital, small town capital grant, I think that would be great. The next item is, I had mentioned earlier about a solar array. There is a, it's in the process. On our town level, the planning board recently went into addressing a special permit for a solar array over on, off of Hurtu Road, and with a lot of different aspects that they considered, even though the solar array is not in the town of Millville, the only way it could be constructed was going through the town of Millville. So, originally, they thought we were going to just rubber stamp this particular proposal, and thanks to our town planner and a number of other people, including our police chief and others, who contributed to the ongoing permit process and review during the public hearings, I think we came out with a really good agreement, and that is going forward, even though that the town of Uxbridge still has to do its due diligence. But for us, we also were able to negotiate a pilot agreement with the company that is going to be putting that forward. Originally, they wanted to not do anything for the town, and I was pretty strong on advocating for us, and so, the pilot agreement will bring in a substantive amount of money that I'm trying to negotiate now to actually happen in the next several months. So, that part of it is going forward, and, you know, again, it shows you that certain things can be done as long as it goes through the correct process. There's another thing that the town stands to gain with this agreement, and that is to get the entire Hurtu Road brought up to public waste standards. That was a negotiating piece for us, and so, the full value of this agreement actually is much better than having been offered what originally was there. So, I look forward to having that done on the completion of the actual solar array and, and having the pilot agreement, payment upfront. So, that will be helpful to the town. And the last item on my agenda is aggregation. I know I mentioned this to you, but I just wanted you to know, there are two dates for pricing coming up for our electricity aggregation that will go out onto the market. One is going to be the date of August 29th. If I sign something that day, I'll be letting you know. If not, we'll be going again out on September 26th after the national grid rates come out. So, depending on what we get. And as far as, your next meeting will be on September 4th, which is a Tuesday, after the Labor Day holiday.
Which is an election day, primary day.
Yes, yes, on that same day.
Signatures.
Thank you.
Signatures. We have a lot.
Plus, I think you did take the, right here, Mr. That one. Each one of you, yeah. Yeah, anywhere you can sign. There's so many of them that if I start splitting them up, you'll not remember which one you, unless you want to jump.
There's another pile. Goodness. These statements should be by the local town.
I know. It's just blonde stuff.
Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September fourth, twenty eighteen, and I'll
I'll adjourn the meeting.